I hereby call to order the Village of Riverside Planning and Zoning Commission regular meeting of Tuesday, December 17, 2024. Could you please call the roll?
Commissioner Clarkson?
Here.
Commissioner Palatier?
Here.
Commissioner Miller?
Here.
Commissioner Brom?
Here.
Commissioner Matthews?
Here.
Chairperson Hattigan?
Here. We have quorum. First item is approval of the minutes, the regular meeting minutes of October 23, 2024. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Does anyone have any changes to the minutes? Hearing none, and could you please call the roll?
Commissioner Clarkson?
Aye.
Commissioner Palatier?
Aye.
Commissioner Miller?
I wasn't here, so I think I have to abstain.
Abstain. Mr. Brom?
Aye.
Mr. Matthews?
Abstain.
Chairperson Hattigan?
Aye. Motion passes. Next up, visitors' petitions, citizen requests, and communications. We have no one present, so we can move on to the village board update? Do I have that right?
Yes. All right. We do not have a village board update.
Okay. Very good. Moving right along, our item of new business, PZ 24-0010, a public hearing on text amendments for surface coverage standards. This is a public hearing to consider various changes to the Village of Riverside zoning ordinance regulations relative to pervious, semi-pervious, and impervious surfaces. The petitioner is the Village of Riverside. Is there a motion to open the public hearing?
I assume so.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. The notice of the public hearing was published in the Landmark on November 27, 2024, and will be marked as an exhibit. The remaining application materials will be marked as a second exhibit. Is there a motion to accept the exhibits?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Anne?
Thank you very much. So I will be as brief as possible, given the fact that we've discussed this multiple times, but if anyone who is missing from any previous meeting has any questions, please let me know. The purpose of the text amendments is to define and provide standards for pervious, semi-pervious, and impervious surfaces for properties in the residential zoning districts. A couple of highlights, semi-pervious surfaces that retain the first inch of stormwater, as approved by the village engineer, will be considered 80% impervious and 20% pervious, i.e., it'll have a 20% discount rate. The text amendments do not change the current standards for nonconforming properties. Properties that exceed impervious surface limits can keep what they have, but the total amount of impervious surface coverage cannot increase. Nonconforming properties must become compliant when more than 50% of the hardscape on a property is removed, for example, when a property is redeveloped. And for a few properties that had previously approved hardscape as pervious or semi-pervious surfaces by the village engineer during a previous review and previously approved permit, that will be considered legally nonconforming, as noted in the files. That will not change their coverage. The commission is asked to review the proposed text amendments and make a recommendation to the village board. Standards for text amendments are attached in the meeting materials, and the commission's discussion will be summarized, and the recommendation will be forwarded to the village board in a findings of fact and recommendation. Just in terms of implementation, one note that we didn't discuss, I believe, during the last meeting, is that the village does currently encourage residents to improve stormwater management on their property with the Stormwater Management Permit Incentive Program, which provides a rebate to homeowners who would make certain improvements to their property that qualify, that would improve stormwater runoff and retention. So this is somewhat of a similar goal as that program. So staff will ask the village board whether they would like to pursue a similar financial incentive for the replacement of impervious surfaces with semi-pervious surfaces, because that's not currently covered by the program, and considering that incentives may be proposed in the forthcoming Climate Action and Resilience Plan and the annual budgeting process. That is all I have. Unless you have any questions, I'd be happy to review the information in the memo or the text amendments themselves.
Any questions of staff?
Has the attorney reviewed all of this yet?
Bob has reviewed the materials for this meeting, yes.
Okay. If there are no other questions, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. That brings us to a discussion, motion, and recommendation. Would anyone like to begin discussion?
I think in general, it looks very good. I had a couple of, I wasn't at the last meeting, so I had a couple of comments or questions, but okay, just to get into the details. One thing that occurred to me is that a lot of this, as you note in the memo, is really going to depend on enforcement and analysis and all the rest, and so I'm assuming that there will be like checklists or inspection procedures or whatever that will be developed in the future to determine things like if something is resistant or prevents infiltration the way the new language reads.
So our intention for the implementation is to require, as the installation of this material, so if you needed to install hardscape, in any case, you'd need a building permit. So when you obtain your building permit, you'll also obtain, for the installation of semi-pervious surfaces under this definition, a grading permit, which would be reviewed by the village engineer. They'll provide a detail of what's to be installed, and then the village engineer recommended two inspections. For the village engineer, specifically, one to make sure that the excavation was to the proper depth, and the second was the installation of the subsurface material, to make sure that that was installed correctly.
By the village engineer?
By the village engineer specifically. And then the building inspector, who is a full-time village staff employee, would do the final inspection of the work. So there'd be three inspections total.
And then that would also apply, let's say there's new construction, and there's compacted dirt that goes along with that, which is a way that you could have, I was glad to see that called out there, that that can be impervious surface, compacted dirt, or compacted gravel. So that will also be something that will be sort of encompassed in inspection checklists?
So in terms of compacted dirt, when we discussed this, I'm trying to recall, a few meetings ago, we discussed the, and I discussed this with the village engineer, who works with Christopher Burke, Dan Lynch, and I said that very point, you know, when you move a lot of materials in creating, especially for single-family homes, you, you know, moving a lot of equipment and materials on a site, and he said for engineering purposes, they anticipate some level of compaction of the soil. He said there's no standard practice that he's aware of in the engineering field for a single-family use that would go back and, I don't know, inject air and break up the soil or any kind of thing like that to reduce compaction. So the assumption is that even though you have some amount of compaction as part of construction, that a surface that isn't covered with something would still be considered a pervious surface. So if you put in sod, if you put in mulch, that would be considered a pervious surface. It wouldn't be considered semi-pervious or impervious unless there is a semi-pervious surface or an impervious surface covering it.
Didn't hear that last word.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Because of the.
Oh, I'm sorry. So a surface would be considered only a.
Just the last, it wouldn't be considered, compacted dirt wouldn't be considered semi-pervious or.
Impervious.
If, unless, I think you said something, unless.
Unless it was covered with a semi-pervious surface or impervious surface.
Okay. So then should we not have that in the definitions, I think, for, one of the definitions references compacted dirt or compacted gravel?
Yeah, those are included in the definition for impervious surface. I think it would make sense to leave them there to allow for those circumstances where they are compacted so much that water is just running right off of them.
Well, that's a good question. So let's say that's happening, and the neighbor starts complaining, oh, there's this new house, and I'm getting runoff all the time, and I can see that it's pounding on there. Is that a situation that we're open to going in and having an inspection, saying, actually, this falls under these regulations, you are now over the impervious surface? Let's say they are impervious surface requirement, you're going to have to remedy this.
So that would be more of a drainage issue and stormwater management issue than an impervious surface issue, but the village code would account for that. There are standards in the village code that say that you can't make any changes to your property such that it would, I'm not sure exactly what the wording is, but effectively negatively impact your neighbors in terms of stormwater runoff. So if we had, for example, new construction, or if we had an addition or something on the back of the house, and we had issues with stormwater impacting the neighbors, that would be covered under a different section of the code.
Okay. So you don't think, so Commissioner Hattigan's still saying we should include the compacted dirt, so can you imagine a scenario where that would be invoked? Let's say for new construction, either an entire lot, or a garage, or something like that, where it's standard that you're going to have compacted dirt because machinery is moving around and all the rest? It wouldn't be considered impervious in a new calculation that you or your successor would do, but then later on, maybe it would be, maybe someone would say, oh, we should have considered this? What would be a situation in which we would consider compacted dirt as impervious?
I'm trying to think of an example where we've had, based on, if any issues have come up, I'm not aware of any issues, where we've had compaction to the point where it's considered an impervious surface.
And permanent, right? Because what you're describing in construction is temporary. Most people don't want compacted dirt in their yards, and so if they're doing construction, it could be compacted, and then the last thing they would do would be to remedy it.
Well, it might be. I don't know, depending on who it is. If you have a builder who's building something, and they're just selling it onto someone else, and most people are not going to go and like, look and see how much water flows through, you know, my backyard, they're just not. And maybe they'll say, oh, well, I want this.
Once they live there, they will notice.
Well, they might, and then maybe they don't have the money to take care of it. I mean, if it's flowing into their house, they might do something about it, but I think if it's going into the neighbors, or it's.
But then she's talking.
Running off into the stormwater system, they may not say, oh, I've got to dig up, I've got to aerate my backyard.
So we've had, in the case where you're doing more than 400 square feet of moving soil, if you're moving more than 400 square feet of soil, you're required to have a grading permit. So that would be part of a building permit for new construction, for an addition. If folks do significant landscaping in their yards, that requires a grading permit. That's reviewed by the village engineer, who ensures that whatever changes are being made to the property are going to accommodate the stormwater that it should. So if there is an instance, so typically, we're going to see two situations. One, someone's doing construction, and that's part of their building permit, that we're monitoring stormwater runoff and soil compaction, and that's monitored by the village engineer. The second case would be some sort of code enforcement issue, where someone's having an issue with standing water in their yard, but that's also typically, changes to that are typically the result of someone else doing construction or making changes to their yard. So typically, you know, if folks have flooding in their backyard, and for the most part, what we hear from folks is, there's always been standing water in my backyard during certain seasons. If the neighbor makes a change and it becomes worse, then we can address that through code enforcement.
I think another delineation maybe to, you know, it's compacted gravel and compacted dirt is kind of, the delineation is that it doesn't have anything growing on it, that it's just dirt and not grass, or, you know, it doesn't, it's not planted. So it's just like sodded. So you can see it, yeah. So if it's sodded, although sometimes this was, I'm not, I'm not, all I'm trying to say is, I'm not trying to solve this problem necessarily, I'm just saying, should the reference to compacted dirt and compacted gravel be in there if we're actually never going to apply that? Because if there's new construction, or a new garage, or whatever, someone's always going to say, oh, well, you know, of course it's, you know, what's the circumstance which we would, it makes me uncomfortable when there are situations where sometimes you don't invoke a term, and then other times you do invoke that term. So if there is a situation in which the term would be invoked, maybe keep it in there, but if we would never apply this compacted dirt or compacted gravel, impervious surface identification, should it be in there? I think it should be, but it doesn't sound like it's ever going to actually be applied. Does that make, does that make sense? Do you understand what I'm getting to what I'm saying?
Yeah, I'm not sure if, whether or not it actually comes up in practice is one question, but I think if we remove it from saying compacted gravel and dirt is an impervious surface, then it becomes pervious, and we don't want to encourage that and allow it.
That's true. So let's say you have a gravel driveway, and we wouldn't approve a new gravel driveway, but let's say someone built a new house, or a new structure, and they have an existing compacted gravel driveway. The compacted gravel driveway would be considered impervious, I assume?
Yes, it would.
And, okay. So that would be an instance in which you'd want to still use the compacted gravel term as calling, as being part of the impervious surface.
Yes, that would be an example.
I'm just having more difficulty understanding the compacted, but moving on to another thing, I just, you've probably considered this, but the fact that there is in the definition of impervious surface, it references any surface or ground cover that restricts the ability of stormwater to drain, and then has a long list, or similar surfaces. And then, in the definition of pervious surface, oh no, in the definition of other structures or surfaces that would be impervious, it says any other structure or surface that prevents the entry of more than 90% of water into the ground below. So that's on my, like, page four of the definitions, but the, so it's just that impervious surfaces initially identified as any surface or groundwater that restricts, and then later on, there's a reference to a structure that prevents more than 90% of water to infiltrate. It seems to me like it could be, could be confusing.
Okay.
And I'm wondering if, and again, we've probably considered this many times, but if it would be better to use the term prevents in the definition of impervious surface, what other people, commissioners, think about that?
Your question is about using the word restrict versus prevent.
Prevents, right, because one's used in one place, and the other's used in the other place, kind of in a similar definition.
Interchangeably.
Yeah.
Except one says prevents more than 90 or some percentage, right?
Right.
And in this case, and the other, which is actually restricting it to, right? If it's allowing some small percentage, it is restricting it.
Right.
And so I don't think there's a conflict between those two things, and I think to use prevent might be too restrictive. To say that an impervious surface prevents water from infiltrating, someone could argue, right? Someone could argue that, you know, many surfaces that we would consider impervious, they don't 100% prevent infiltration. Compacted gravel.
Right.
Right. So I don't, I guess I don't see the conflict necessarily, because one says, because it's trying to say just other structures, so it's being the catch-all, and then using the 90% prevention.
Right. Right. But someone could argue that if it's any surface or ground cover that restricts the ability of stormwater, that could be just, that's just a restriction. It's not really, it could be a restriction of 10% of it going, or 20% going in. It's like not just flowing right into it, so it's like restricting a little bit. So, and I know we have a line, then a line of examples, which is like a building, yeah, obviously that restricts 100%, and then it could be, I don't know, porous concrete or whatever, or concrete. It just seems to, like, maybe it's too hard to discuss this at this meeting. I just don't know if anyone had raised that before, that it seems like that could be an area where someone could be either confused when they're applying this, or an opening for someone to argue, you know, or even, even for the village to argue, well, you know, you're saying restricts, and I've got this surface, and yeah, not 100% of the water's going into the surface, so you want to call it impervious because it says restricts the entry of water, but it's clearly, you know, a semi-pervious or even a pervious surface.
I think what we're trying to do with the definition of impervious surface, to start with, is provide, I think, the basic parameters of an impervious surface. So here are some basic parameters, here are some examples, and specifically on the end, which I think is important, the way that we've structured this, is we've got three types. We've got pervious, we've got semi-pervious, and we've got impervious. And semi-pervious is very specific about what it is. It's not just, you know, not asphalt, you know, or it's very specific, it has to be approved by the village engineer to be considered semi-pervious, otherwise it's impervious. So not putting the 90% standard in the impervious surface generally, I think, makes some sense to the way that we've structured this. And then moving down, jump down here, and then just generally, how we measure, and I think this is the section that it's in, how we measure impervious surfaces can be more specific about that last catch-all.
Right.
If we didn't catch it above, we've got this last bit that says, if it prevents the entry of more than 90% of the water into the ground below, I suppose we don't necessarily need to specify 90%. I don't know of any other surface that we haven't covered in the list above, honestly. I was just trying to think, well, what else, what else is there? But what we could, if it would be, if it would be more consistent to replace the 90%, and instead just say any other surface, structure, or surface that prevents, excuse me, any other structure or surface that does not meet the definition of a pervious or semi-pervious surface.
Yeah, that could be a way.
Because that way, we're just, again, reiterating, we've got three categories. If you don't meet pervious or are very specific semi-pervious standards, you're impervious.
That's a way to approach it, maybe. I think, yes, kind of what I was thinking was, all of a sudden, it's a fourth category thrown on in the end.
And.
And I think, you know, if the attorney reviews all this and is satisfied that this is, you know, clear, and it's not hard to interpret for people or, you know, citizens if they can't come back and say the village is being inconsistent with how that, then I'm fine with that. I just wanted to make sure that.
I think that change could address your concern, and I think it's consistent, even if it's a bit redundant. I don't mind a little bit of redundancy in the code.
And then I have one more comment on, right under the impervious surface definition, then it says semi-pervious surface coverage standards, and then at the end of paragraph two there, I think you have to go up a bit, right under the first definition of the next page up, I think, the next.
Oh, okay.
Okay, right there you went.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, wait a minute, no, go up a little bit more.
Keep going, okay.
It's, yes.
Okay.
Under the surfaces approved by the village, as pervious or semi-pervious, shall be made approved, blah, blah, blah. If the surfaces, which presumably means the surfaces that are pervious or semi-pervious are altered or removed, they may be replaced with a semi-pervious surface that meets the requirements in this section. So let's say you had a pervious surface that makes it sound like you could have a pervious surface of, say, 500 square feet, if they're altered in some way, let's say someone puts new sod in, or puts new garden, or whatever, that pervious surface could be replaced with a semi-pervious surface. That's how I read that.
So it's a little, it's a little confusing, because the terms, before we defined our terms, we had permits that were approved, and the village engineer would approve something as completely pervious. That was, that was something that we would consider semi-pervious.
Semi, okay.
So what I was trying to say, and this, it makes sense to us, knowing the history of that, as staff, so if we have a pervious or semi-pervious surface, then those surfaces can be replaced with semi-pervious surfaces that meet the standards, be brought into compliance with our new code. So if you had a patio that previously was reviewed by the village engineer and determined to be pervious.
Okay. So for the most case, there was a default to something that's semi-pervious, just being lumped in as pervious? That's in the factual, actual situation that you're seeing?
Yes, in the permits, yeah.
Okay. Because in general, when someone's coming in for a permit, nothing would be called pervious, because it would just be, it wouldn't be sort of even looked at or considered, if it was just like ground or garden or whatever.
Oh, sure.
I mean, no one defined, oh, this is pervious over here, and this is.
Only if they're putting in hardscape. And in some cases, they call that semi-pervious, in some cases, they call it pervious, and there are not very many instances of that, but there are a few.
Okay.
Should we change it to say, as long as it meets the current definition of semi-pervious?
What kind of says that?
Does it say that?
That meets the requirements in this section. Or do you mean if the, what was initially there, if that would meet the current definition of semi-pervious, then it can be replaced with semi-pervious?
So if it's, if it was a previously approved, it would qualify, it's legally conforming as far as we're concerned, so it doesn't need to, they don't need to reprove that it was installed correctly, if that's what you're asking?
Okay.
Because it would just fall under previously approved and conforming. And so we would consider that, if someone came in, for example, if they had put in a patio, and it was declared pervious previously, we would honor that calculation if they make changes to the property.
Yeah.
They wouldn't have to meet the current standards in the code, only if they remove the surface, and then all we're trying to say is, if you had previously done that, you're not grandfathered in as, for example, 100% pervious surface, if you were before.
Okay.
Yeah.
In the definition of semi-pervious, it sounds to me like that is necessarily a man-made or man-manipulated surface.
In the.
Because it has to have a substrate.
In the definition of semi-service?
Yes, semi-pervious.
I don't know that you could install something that wasn't put in by someone and meet the definition of semi-pervious, because it has to have that.
Throw some gravel down or something. I mean, you know, like, to be semi-pervious, you would have to do the work of installing a substrate, so you couldn't have a semi-pervious surface that was maybe, let's say, lots of flagstones, or rock outcroppings that were naturally occurring on your, on your land or something like that, because you wouldn't have any substrate under that.
That's correct.
So it could be rocks mixed with lots of dirt, I don't know how that would be called, but maybe it'd be called pervious because it's natural.
Yeah, I'm trying to think of any examples that I can think of. I think for the most part, when folks install flagstone paths or something like that, they've got some sort of substrate under it.
Right.
So we wouldn't have a mix of, maybe I'm missing your point, I apologize.
Well, I'm saying, I mean, this is an older village. It could be something that either was naturally occurring from when houses were initially built, it could be like concrete that was thrown down 60 years ago into a garden or something to do something, I mean, but, I mean, I guess we wouldn't be calling, we would, there would be no call to call that semi-pervious, because it's not something that's being installed in the future, I mean, from now into the future.
That's correct. If we had, we have properties where we have, yeah, example, a slab of very old concrete, or a set of pervious pavers that were installed. If I, if we don't, if we can't verify that they were installed with a substrate, or that they weren't installed with something that would make them impervious, like palmeric sand, you know, then we would consider that an impervious surface.
Because people might have done it, again, years ago, or even now, with, just on their own, without, you know, hiring a, you know, proper person.
Sure.
They're just doing it on their weekend or whatever, and putting in some turf, block, grasscrete, or whatever, and.
Sure. And when we calculate that, we calculate, unless we have, again, unless we know that it was installed, or it was verified by the village engineer, we would consider that an impervious surface.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Any other discussion?
I have a minor comment on the wording. Under the eaves and overhangs, we say, you know, if it's more than 18 inches wide, it shall include in the impervious surface measurements, except that 18 inches shall be subtracted from the impervious surface measurement?
Mm-hmm.
I think just to clarify that we're, we're not subtracting 18 inches from the square footage, right? I mean, I know what we're trying to say there, but.
Sure, 18 inches of width?
Times the length, or I don't know if it's the first 18 inches of the overhang is not included.
I can say the first 18 inches of the overhang, or 18 inches of the overhang? Would 18 inches of the overhang be sufficient?
I think so, yeah.
I wrote that initially as the first 18 inches, but I found that logically confusing, because we're trying to subtract.
It could be the last 18 inches.
Last 18 inches.
Yes, but it's, yeah, 18 inches of the overhang. It's really a square footage that doesn't, right? It's a square footage that does not apply.
Exactly. So we could say.
And we're giving a lineal measurement, that's my.
Sure, I take your point. The, I'm not sure how to reword that without getting overly complicated, but would stating the 18 inches closest to, or the edge?
Yeah, or 18 inches.
The outer edge.
Of width.
18 inches of width, okay.
Width of depth.
Could maybe use the language from the earlier, about 18 inches wide or less, about, you know, except that portion less than 18 inches past the building footprint?
Yeah.
Shall be subtracted from the impervious surface measurement?
Sure. I.e. the first 18 inches.
Exactly.
Yeah.
I did have one more thing on the very last sentence, stormwater runoff. One question I had was, should it reference and runs off of the lot where, like, the stormwater was deposited? It just says stormwater does not immediately infiltrate into the ground below. So let's say you have stormwater, it's hitting a lot. It doesn't immediately infiltrate right where it fell, but by the time it gets to the sidewalk, it's not running off anymore. Is that stormwater runoff?
We can specify that it runs off. I think the intention is that it's not contained within the property where it falls.
Yeah, that's right, something like that.
So we can end that by saying that does not immediately infiltrate into the ground below, and your suggestion was and runs off the property?
Yeah, right, runs off the property. Or whatever, something like that.
All right, any other discussion? In that case, we can go through the standards for text amendments. Number one, the extent to which the proposed amendment promotes the public health, safety, comfort, convenience, and general welfare of the village.
Yes, I think it definitely does.
Number two, the relative gain to the public as compared to the hardship imposed upon the applicant. So I think that's the intent here.
Yes.
Number three, the consistency of the proposed amendment with village plans.
Yes, I think it's consistent, yes.
Number four, the consistency of the proposed amendment with the intent and general regulations of the zoning ordinance.
True.
Yes.
Number five, whether the proposed amendment corrects an error or omission, adds clarification to existing requirements, reflects a change in policy.
Yes. I think it's mostly doing all those things, maybe not so much the last clause, but yes, we're trying to clarify our impervious standards.
I would agree with that. Number six, that the proposed amendment will benefit the residents of the village as a whole and not just the applicant, property owners, neighbors of any property under consideration, or other special interest groups, and the extent to which the proposed use would be in the public interest and will not serve solely the interest of the applicant.
True.
Yes?
Yes, yes.
And number seven, whether the proposed amendment provides a more workable way to achieve the intent and purposes of the zoning ordinance and the village plans. Yes. Number eight, the extent to which the proposed amendment creates non-conformities. We've addressed those. And nine, the extent to which the proposed amendment is consistent with the overall structure and organization of the zoning ordinance. Yes?
Yes.
All right. In that case, is there a motion?
I'm Muwif. We approve the text amendment, yes, with the proposed changes.
Okay, just to clarify, that will be the changes to the section E1F regarding other structures or surfaces, the language regarding eaves and overhangs, and the definition of stormwater runoff. Is there a second?
Second.
And please call the vote. Commissioner Clarkson?
Aye.
Commissioner Palatier, sorry?
Aye.
Commissioner Miller?
Aye.
Commissioner Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Matthews?
Aye.
Chairperson Nannigan?
Aye.
The motion passes. This will move forward to Village Board for consideration at a future meeting. All right, our next item is discussion regarding text amendments for front-loaded garages.
Thank you. In 2018, the Planning and Zoning Commission had recommended text amendments related to driveways and garages. The, an ordinance was ultimately approved in 2020, but it was missing some of the elements from the 2018 amendments. And we had discussed this back in February, and I summarized your feedback in the attached memo, along with recommendations for moving forward. So our goal would be to get your input on this. If we feel that these are ready for a public hearing, then we would hold a public hearing on text amendments in January. Or if you'd like to see more specific language drafted, I can bring that back to you in January. But reviewing what we looked at, these are the remaining items, and they range from building code standards to design standards to bonus density. And just for your reference, I did provide, and I emailed these to you, diagrams that we'll get to later, showing examples of the bonus density in a few different zoning districts. That was what was at your table. So reviewing the elements of the 2018 amendments that were not included in the 2020 ordinance, starting with adding standards for exterior walls to the building code, when we had talked about it this in February, a few of you noted that these requirements were probably already included in the building code and weren't necessary to amend our amendments to the building code. I confirmed that the IBC and the IRC include these provisions. They seem unnecessary to amend our building code. Further, we are intending later this year to update to the 2024 building code, which will include the latest standards for exterior walls and fire prevention. So staff's recommendation is to not include these in moving forward. This is a topic that was actually also on the commission's 2025 work plan, is the required separation of accessory structure and principal buildings. Currently, the zoning code recommends, or requires, a 10-foot separation between accessory buildings and principal buildings. So your garage can't be any closer to your home than 10 feet. We reviewed this and confirmed that the building code requires a three-foot separation only if the accessory structure doesn't have fire suppression. I think you can be a little bit closer if you do have fire suppression. But we couldn't identify a zoning reason why there should be the 10-foot separation. So the code also, as a note, currently states that accessory buildings are only permitted behind the principal building on a property. Things are a little bit different for a corner lot. You can have the accessory building next to the building, but it can't be any closer to the street than the principal building. So our recommendation would be to amend the zoning code to state that accessory buildings don't need to be separated any more than the building code requires from the primary structure.
I support that.
And that would bring, thankfully, a couple of non-conforming garages into compliance and provide additional design flexibility for folks who want to build either new or rebuild their garage.
So I think the building code covers it. We should leave it in one place.
Agreed.
Moving on to garage door widths, and this is a design issue, I believe that was intended to reduce the visual domination scale of front-loaded garages. So front-loaded garage is meaning a garage where you would drive directly from the street into the garage, and you can see the garage doors from the street. It's not located to the side of the building or behind a principal structure. So obviously, you're seeing those garage doors from the street, and they're more prominent. So you can see currently in the code, there is a limitation on a front-loaded attached garage. That's a garage that's part of the principal structure of nine feet wide. The 2018 amendment, and then you have a detached garage, and all the other types of garages can have garage doors that are up to 18 feet wide. The 2018 amendments would have changed front-loaded detached garages and side-loaded garages to restrict the size of that to nine feet wide. I believe with the assumption that they're more visible from the street. And I believe there was a concern also because the amendments mentioned non-conforming structures. So just a note on non-conforming structures, and because the code currently says if you have a front-loaded attached garage, the garage door should be no more than nine feet. We've got a number of houses in the village that don't meet that standard, so they would be considered non-conforming. So to cover that, the existing standards in the code for non-conforming structures state that you've got kind of three categories. Two are grouped together. And the first two have to do with actions that the homeowner doesn't take. So for example, if there were a fire or some sort of major event that damaged a building, if a building is more than 50% damaged or destroyed based on the replacement value by means not within control of the owner, then they have to rebuild to the current standards. If it's less than 50%, then they can keep any non-conforming standards they have. If the, if a non-conforming structure is damaged by means within control of the owner, meaning they demolish their home or garage, then they can, they have to meet the standards in the code. And that's to any extent that it's damaged, so I can't imagine what extent would be less than 100% within control of the owner, but in any case, that's what the code says. So if you've got a non-conforming house with a front-loaded attached garage with garage doors that are wider than nine feet currently, you have a house fire and more than 50% of the structure by value is destroyed, you'd have to come into compliance with that standard. Now, if you didn't want to meet that based on the design of the house, so we've got some houses where the main thing that you see approaching from the street is the garage and then the house is behind it, that would require variation. And I think you could make a strong case that you're trying to replace the house as is and apply for your variation. So that would be the way that you'd approach that with the code as it's written.
So is this saying that a front-loaded detached garage, if your garage is behind, you know, like many are, is behind your house, not terribly visible from the street, but it is front-loaded?
Mm-hmm.
Then that's a front-loaded detached garage? And we're saying that it requires two, a nine-foot?
So I think we're using two different terms for those.
Okay.
So, and I know it's somewhat counterintuitive, but bear with me. If you have a primary residence and at the same, approximately equal to the front foundation, but separate from that building, you've got a front-loaded garage. Then you've got a front-loaded detached, according to our table. And then if you've got it behind the house, the garage is behind the house, that would be rear-detached. So in the 2018 amendments, if you, if your garage is behind your house, you could have, which you can also today...
Oh, a rear-detached.
Rear-detached.
I see.
That's the difference, yep.
Yep, okay, sorry.
No, no, no.
I had the same, I had the same concern because I was thinking, well, if it's front-loaded but it's behind the house, or even like at the back of the house, like towards the back of the house, I don't, that's not something we should be regulating. Would a front-loaded detached, as stated in your table there, be basically parallel to the facade of the house?
Effectively, yeah.
And a side-loaded would be one that's loaded from the side?
Exactly.
Which is not the same as a front-loading garage in the side yard?
Correct. That's correct.
Okay, so a front-loaded detached could be anything that's either at the, parallel to the front facade of the house, or anywhere sort of within, what, the first 20 feet of the depth of the house? I mean, because it would seem to include all of those.
Sure.
Anything that's not to the rear of the house?
Mm-hmm, anything that's not behind the house, yeah.
Yeah, behind the house, behind the back of the house.
Sure.
So maybe that should be defined somehow.
I think that should be more clearly defined, and I appreciate your input on that. So if you're thinking the, so for a detached garage, if you're thinking the front-loaded includes everything basically alongside the house, so starting at the front foundation, going to the back of the house, even if it's to the side of the house, if it's there, it's front-loaded.
I think so.
If it's side-loaded, the only time we would use the term side-loaded is if it literally is a driveway running alongside the house, and then the vehicle turns to enter the garage.
And I would think a rear-loaded would be, a rear-detached would be anything that's sort of behind the back wall of the house.
Sure.
And even if it's one or two feet, just for ease of application.
Sure, so you could have a front-loaded garage in a side yard.
Yeah, right. So I was, I would agree with your recommendation to include those definitions.
Yeah, we had come up with definitions, and I think illustrations would be very helpful in this case.
Yes.
And I'll work on those. But in any case, if we're in agreement that that's generally what our understanding is going to be, I'll refine the definitions.
Right, and I would also agree with the, calling out the exception for alley garages, ones that access into the alley, to make that clear. Now, can you, and can you clarify for me? So we are not considering here anything about the percentage of the facade that is, that a garage can take up for a front-loaded attached garage? That, that's not part of this?
That is correct.
That was kind of decided years ago. The board didn't want to touch that.
Part of the 2020 amendments.
Yeah. I still think it should be addressed, but it's just my opinion.
We have an upcoming set, just as a side note, after we pass these amendments, we have a number of what I would call smaller text amendments that we want to group together and bring together, and we can certainly add that to the list, but that would include a number of items on the commission's work plan for 2025.
So if my neighbors have a ranch house in a double, like a two-car garage, so an 18-car garage, and their house burns down, they would have to apply for a variation to rebuild that two-car garage if they're a ranch. I feel like, because ranches are like part of the house, and so that is include, that is, that is attached. That's, that would be considered an attached.
There are a number of ranch houses that I drive on, die in Long Common that look just like that.
Yeah.
Yeah, so we fortunately do not have very many house fires where it destroys more than 50% of the home's value. If that was the case, then they would need to apply for a variation to maintain, to rebuild the house exactly as it was with that front-loaded garage with the wider doors. Now, if they wanted to rebuild the garage and put in two nine-foot doors or two eight-foot doors, they could certainly do that because that would be compliant.
Oh, okay.
If they just put a, you know, a little wall between the two and separated them, they'd be compliant.
That's how those people do that.
Is a standard one-car garage door nine feet?
You know, I think it's eight. Because I think, I think a standard garage door is 16. I think if you can get an extra wide one, it's 18. I wondered about that, too, and I looked online for my minimal research, was able to see that it did appear to be typically 18, or 16 feet wide, so presumably eight.
For, the single, for whatever reason, I've usually seen as nine, though.
Oh, are they?
Yeah.
Okay.
I don't know, because you need a little more play.
A little more maneuverability, perhaps.
One.
I feel like mine's eight. We can't open both doors. All the way, if it's in the garage.
So in the, at the very top of what you have up there on the screen, the front-loaded garage definition, when I read it the first time, I found it slightly confusing because I was still thinking about attached and detached and wasn't really thinking about front-loaded garages that were next to the house but not attached to it. I don't know if it would be useful, or if to call that out in the definition to mention like attached or detached, or if there's a separate category in the ordinance already that talks about attached garages and detached garages, and if it would be clear to someone who's reading it.
I think it makes sense to call it out because further in the standards, when it comes to the design of garages and the standards, it does separate attached garages and detached garages. There's two separate sections for those.
Then you want that to cover both types?
Yes. So we can, I'll make sure that the definition jives with the rest of the ordinance and that we're not contradicting ourselves later on in the ordinance.
Yeah, we'll probably want to see those all together.
Yes.
Compare them.
And this, you, there's only three definitions here.
That's correct.
And not the rear-detached.
Sure. So we can incorporate, I think, if we want to, we can make a separate definition or incorporate basically rear-loaded and rear-detached into one. Because really, that's the intention, is that you're not going to have...
Except the rear-detached is not rear-loaded. Not to be difficult, but it's front-loaded, right?
No, you're right. It is, it is front-loaded typically, yeah. Typically, you don't turn, I mean, theoretically, it could be side-loaded, but, yeah. I take your point.
So I think, I think, I feel like that begs a definition.
Sure.
Which may have to include what minimum separation might be to, to consider it a rear-detached as opposed to a front-loaded. Because now we've, we've decreased the detached to three feet, so it can be only like three feet from the back of the house, right?
Sure.
So I think we want to maybe increase if it's going to be considered a rear-detached garage with front-loading, it has to have a minimum separation from the primary structure.
If it were, if it were as far back as the rear foundation wall, because in my mind, I imagine that's the dividing line. You hit the rear foundation wall of the house. If you're behind there, I would consider that rear, you know, whether...
See, I would think, because it's still, it would still have to be very kind of prominent from a visual standpoint. If it's really, if the front of the garage is equal to the back of the house, I feel like it's still...
Oh, for a...
Pretty, pretty prominent, right? Whereas most of the rear detached garages, you actually come in and then kind of, they're usually a little bit...
A little offset.
Yeah. So there's maneuvering room in between the garage and the, and the primary residence.
Let me bring up a, I don't know if this would help at all.
You know what we need is like a model.
Yeah. Well, I was just about to bring up the diagrams that are attached to see if those can help us at all.
Probably some actual photographs of houses would be...
I was thinking Legos.
Because I'm thinking like, if you have a standard house, by the time you get to
Because I'm thinking like, if you have a standard house, by the time you get to the rear wall of that house, and you've got trees and you've got everything else, like this house here, I mean, if there was a garage parallel to the back of that house, I wouldn't, it would be fine with me if that's an eighteen-wide garage door, and if it's not two separate nine.
Right, but that's got more than twenty feet of separation between the garage.
Right, but if it was moved up, if it was moved up to, to the back wall of the house where the arrow is, I, I wouldn't personally mind it that much, because it's still, it's a huge difference than if it was an attached garage right at the front side of the house. It's, it's a big difference, it's much less prominent, it's.
I would agree with Commissioner Miller. I, I think that as long as the structure is consistent with the building code, and as far back as the length of the house, or the depth of the house, I think that's far enough back from the street.
So, just as a point of reference, in the, in our standards for fences, we have, what, you start at the, when you measure the height of a fence, it's allowed. You can't have a fence in the street yard. So your street yard starts here, and is this area here. So starting at the front of the house, the front foundation, and going back the first forty feet, or if you hit back of the house and the house is like thirty-eight feet, once you hit either the back of the house or forty feet, you can go up to six feet. So presumably, that's based on the assumption that that's far enough away from the street with, between the street yard and an additional forty feet, that you're visually, that's more of a private space than a public space. So presumably, if we said, you know, either forty feet from the front foundation of the house, let's say you had an exceptionally wide yard, and you wanted to put the garage perhaps here, and let's say this wall was forty feet, you could put the front door of the garage starting perhaps right here, and that could be compliant with the same principle that you're using for the, the fence standard.
Yeah.
Yes, I think using the, the same requirements as for fences makes a lot of sense.
The consistency is nice, yeah.
Yeah, I agree, it makes it simpler, I don't know. I otherwise would necessarily agree, but it really makes it simpler to have one footage.
Distance.
Linear for residents to understand.
So what is that, again, is it forty feet?
It's starting at the front foundation of the house and going back forty feet. So if you get to forty feet and you still have more house, you can go up to six feet. If you actually get to thirty-eight feet and that's the end of the house, you can start your six-foot fence. Let me go back to the proposed definitions. So what I can do is do some additional work on the definitions, provide drawings of each type, similar to the one that we just looked at, so that folks know what we're looking at. And the, also the exceptions for, I guess, the standards for corner and irregularly shaped, like pie-shaped lots. I can also take some photos just around town so we can see in real life what it looks, you know, what we're thinking of.
Come by my house, I'm on the corner, I'm curious. And I would love a bigger.
If you don't mind being featured in, uh.
I don't mind being featured.
Planning and zoning materials, I'd be happy to do it.
Because mine is interesting because it, it is, it touches, but there, it doesn't connect.
Oh, really?
Like, so it's attached, right?
Hmm, interesting. I, yeah, I'll take a look. Um, we have a couple of sections that deal with design requirements. So we currently have two recommendations for front-loaded garages. So these are not requirements, but recommendations. And they spent, and this called out, using upper-level dormers and pitched roofs to encourage, are encouraged to de-emphasize the garage for front-loaded garages. And then garage openings, windows, columns trimmed, decorative paneling and colors should de-emphasize the visual impact of the garage in relation to the building as a whole. The twenty amendments would have, uh, twenty eighteen amendments would have included requirements that the front-loaded residential garage should be consistent with the architectural design of the principal building, and then mentioned consistency, what that means, same or compatible siding, roofing, roof pitch trim and colors, and then where appropriate, upper-level dormers and pitched roofs are encouraged. So first two sentences are requirement, or first sentence is a requirement, second sentence is clarification, and the third sentence is a suggestion. So when the commission discussed this in February, they agreed that requiring the design of front-loaded garage to be consistent wasn't necessary and perhaps not desirable. And they, and you all supported the, rewarding the language to encourage the de-emphasis of front-loaded garage without calling out specific architectural elements, seeing as how they're not appropriate for every home. So I drafted some language for your consideration, if that is something that you'd like to move forward with. And these are examples that I found generally that are accepted, and a little more wide-ranging. Strategic landscaping, garage door designs and angles, architectural details, which would include upper-level dormers and pitched roof elements. Entrez and porches, roof designs and colors are encouraged to de-emphasize the visual impact. And that would apply to front-loaded garages. And again, that would be a recommendation and not a requirement because it says it would be encouraged.
I think that looks good.
Yeah, I think it's better, still think it's better than what exists.
Okay, so these are the setback standards. So the current code states that front-loaded gar, attached front-loaded garages should not protrude past the front building line more, by more than five feet. So we've got a few residences that I see on a regular basis where there's just a little bit of a bump out for the garage. The twenty eighteen amendments would have effectively said, if your bump out is only five feet, as of the date the ordinance would have been approved, then you're legally non-conforming. And it can be, you can maintain that non-conformity even if you demolish the house. And so when the commission discussed that in February, they agreed that, or you all agreed that non-conforming garages should be brought into compliance with the zoning code if they're demolished or rebuilt. And again, the twenty eighteen recommendation, that was an amendment to the code because, and, and again, in, currently in the code, for non-conforming buildings and structures, it says that if you are demolished, you have to be brought into compliance with the standard of the code. So I think there are a couple of options, if you would like to, oh, and, sorry, let me go back to the recommended language. Let's see. I think this might tie into another section, I apologize, it gets a little messy because of dividing things up. But basically, this ties into the next standard. And between the two points, the question is, do you want to require a or encourage any kind of setback from the garage? So currently, the, the code requires, you can't protrude any more than five feet. In twenty eighteen, the thought was you have to be back further. You have to be five feet back from the front foundation of the house if you have an attached front-loaded garage. Again, this was based on, to provide some additional background that was in the staff memo, just as a reminder, there was concern that there were houses being torn down in the village, and that the replacement houses did not look as fitting for Riverside because they were front-loaded garages, and they were double-wide garages, and that was additional concrete in the street yard was not in keeping with the character of the village. So the concern was over time, you know, obviously, one or two houses would make a big difference, but over time, the character of the village would change, which would threaten the National Historic Landmark Designation of the village, which is based on Olmsted's principles. So that was the basis of the discussion. There were certainly more tear downs and rebuilds when this was being discussed, as now. So I know in the past three years, we've had, I think, one demolition and reconstruction of a house. Now, we've had several large renovations, but none of those renovations has resulted in a new front-loaded garage. So typically, what folks do will take things down to the studs and, you know, rebuild, but the garage stays in the back of the house. So that's what we've seen practically. So this wouldn't apply to a lot of properties, but it would be a change if you wanted to change the, the code. So you, I propose two different sets of language. If you want, if you want to make that change, a requirement versus a recommendation, that attached front-loaded garages shall be setback five feet from the front building line, or that it's recommended. And that existing, if that change is made, existing non-con, existing structures that become non-conforming due to that change in the code would be standard, would be subject to the standards in the ordinance for non-conforming structures. Which is to say, again, if you have a house that is less than fifty percent destroyed by means outside of your control, you can rebuild what you have, but if it's more than fifty percent destroyed, or you decide to make that change yourself, you lose that non-conforming status.
I like your language that's under the required there, I approve that.
I don't think there's any point in having a recommendation, because I don't, I don't think anyone would write.
Yeah.
Who's going to follow, so.
I'd agree with that.
So it should either be required or not, and I think it should be required, to be five feet back.
So, just so I can, playing out your language, let's say that somebody has a brick home.
Mm-hmm.
Would they have to, if they were building a new garage, would they then have to build a brick garage?
Um, going back to, let me go back to that.
Or could they build a, I mean, would it, would it require that it has to be the same architecture and?
I think I covered that in a different section, let me, let me skip forward, just a sec.
My house will be a good example for this one, too, because we have a brick garage.
Side-loaded. Okay, it depends on whether you would like to require, and that was another question that I wanted to ask, is we've got standards in the code that have to do with the design, both for front-loaded and for all garages. And I guess the question is, what do we want to require versus what do you want to encourage? So that's, I think, up to the commission, I think, a discussion. So you could use this, this language if you wanted to as a starting point, and you can use the same principle that we did before. So instead of shall be consistent, we could say is recommended to be consistent, or some other wording. So this could be, if you have new construction, the architecture and design of new garages either shall be or are encouraged to be consistent with the architecture and design of the principal building. And then it just goes on to define what consistency is.
I mean, personally, I still like that language. I don't read it to require a brick garage necessarily.
Well, it says shall be consistent.
Well, it says same or compatible siding. And I think if also someone could apply for variance, or say, look, I can't afford to build a brick garage, you know how it's considered is, but here's another design, you know, that is pleasing and compatible. I mean, I think that, I think it leaves that open, the way I read it.
I think compatible.
It's, it's the affordability issue that I'm, I'm trying to avoid.
I think the fact that your house is brick doesn't necessarily mean in order to be compatible with it, your garage also has to be brick. I think there are other materials, certainly an argument could be made.
I think, yeah, if that's the interpretation that's going to be done, then it, I'm okay with the language then.
I would support someone coming up with another term other than compatible, because it always seems, it seems a little odd to me. I know it's in the original language that we have, but if there's a better word or words that could explain, you know, that we're not requiring the same identical brick or material, it's something that is consistent.
I, I agree with you that probably the word I have a problem with is compatible. And, and what that means, does that mean the same? Does it mean that it's the same color? Does it mean it's visually aesthetically pleasing? And who, it's, it's, it's a little bit subjective. I don't. But yes, if we can either define compatible or use a different word.
Consistent, harmonious, coherent.
Suitable. I suspect that, so if you read the consistency of design includes the use of the same or compatible, so I think in this case, compat, compatible doesn't mean the same. It means, I think, complementary, for example. And if you list siding, roofing, roof pitch trim and colors, I think colors can do a lot of work when it comes to a less expensive material looking compatible with or consistent or complementary to a principal structure. So if you had a brick house, and you had a, a garage that was dilapidated, or you didn't have a garage, or you wanted to enlarge a garage, and you wanted to build a new one that wasn't brick, if it were made of, let's say, vinyl siding, but the roof pitch was similar to the principal structure, and you used a siding color that was complementary to the brick color, to my mind, that would be compatible.
Then I would be okay with that language. I just don't want to discourage somebody from replacing a dilapidated, a sited garage with a brick house, and because they can't afford to put in a brick garage, not replace it.
Compatible is so broad, though, and so subjective, I mean, that's, that's the problem. Like, I might, I might think like, you know, I don't know, lamb and tuna fish are compatible, right? But I think that, you know, so like, I mean, it's a problem having something in an ordinance that's so open to interpretation by anyone. And it seems to me we either, we either don't care, or we, we do care, we want to stop people from doing something. And I don't think we want to stop people from doing anything here, really, you know, we just, like, you know, I mean, to your point, if someone has a dilapidated garage they want to repair, I'd rather see that garage fixed than, I don't really care how it looks too much. You know, so at a certain level, you're just trusting people that they want their homes to be attractive. So I'm like wondering if this is even, I mean, it's probably necessary to have something, but the compatible is, I struggle with that.
If, I think it would be, just in my experience, it would be a very exceptional situation for staff to weigh in and say that something was not compatible. And to that end, I, the applicant could then appeal that decision of the zoning administrator to the planning and zoning commission and have more folks weigh in.
ChatGPT also suggests cohesive as another C-word, if we want to just throw it in.
I'm, I'm really okay with the word compatible. I think, I mean, to me, that accomplishes what we're, you know, we're wanting it to be compatible, that it works with the home. And I do think there can't, there could be circumstances where somebody's proposing something that is so wildly different from the character of the neighborhood that it would cause significant problems with, with adjacent residences. You know, if someone wants to put an enormous flat-roof garage, looks like a commercial structure, or something like that. And if that is the case, then yes, if they want to appeal that, then it would come before us, and I think that would be appropriate.
That seems like the most likely scenario to me, if you had a hobbyist, mechanic, who wanted to build something that looked industrial, and if it was in either a prominent lot or an oddly shaped lot, so that was more visible to neighbors, that could be an issue.
And this, what we're talking about is only for detached garages in the side yard. That's the, that's the category it's under, so it's going to be very few. It's going to be very few garages we're talking about.
I, I would recommend, as part of these amendments, that we consolidate some of these things for reasons that aren't entirely clear to me. The zoning ordinance kind of divides up attached, detached, and you have to kind of go back and forth. I would recommend we combine these standards together and say, for all garages, here are the design standards. So for new construction, which I don't know, I, you know, if someone wants to, to take Commissioner Matthews' point, you know, repaint their garage in objectionable color, I don't think we should stop that, but if we can just have one general set of standards for designs, I think that would be preferable.
Yeah, we talked about that in the previous paragraph there, about wanting it to be consistent.
Yes.
Though I suppose for an attached, front-loaded garage on the front facade, standards that would be applied would be a little bit more demanding than if it was like a detached garage in the backyard, you know? It's, it's going to be subjective, I mean, if we do any of this, it's going to be subjective. Yes, I, I support consolidation in general for clarity.
Okay. Let me move to the topic regarding the, the setback. I just want to make sure I understand the direction of the commission. Would you like to pursue a requirement about requiring an attached garage to be setback five feet?
Yeah, I'm in favor of that, I, I agree with, uh, Mr. Peltier, that, you know, recommendation's not going to do anything. If we actually want to do this, then it's going to be required.
Okay.
Yeah, recognizing that this is going to be primarily for new construction homes, I think, yes. It's new construction homes.
Also, though, I'm wondering, we say that it, the measurement does not include architectural features such as baked windows, which makes sense, but unenclosed porches. So we're saying if a home has a porch, the five feet is not measured from the face of the porch, it's measured from.
The foundation.
The foundation of the house.
Mm-hmm, just like the street yard is measured from the foundation of the house.
Okay.
And that ties into the, the next point.
Yeah.
These are all, these two are tied in together, five and six, so effectively, I have your direction on, on both of these, because we had previously discussed requiring porches to protrude at least five feet in front of garage doors. And when you discussed that, we said the front-loaded garages should not be. And when you discuss that, we said the front-loaded garages should not be measured based on front porches. Okay. And we go back to design standards. And to, because we had already discussed this, I just wanted to summarize and make, these were the suggestions that I came up with in incorporating all of the design standards for garages generally. If we wanna call out specific standards for front-loaded garages aside from the setback to reduce the visual impact, here's some suggested language, and these can either be required or encouraged, depending on what you'd like to do. And then just general garage standards. And whether that should be, and it sounds like we want that to be required.
Yes, I think so.
Should the word for, the standards for front-loaded garages, should those be required or encouraged elements?
Who's gonna determine if we use, if we use the term required, does then that become a, you know, when? The building inspector makes that determination? Like who's gonna, who's gonna rule on what are, you know?
It would be staff, staff reviewing it. It would, zoning or the building, me or the building inspector.
Okay, so like ninety-nine percent of times it's gonna be fine, but then like you said, if someone comes in and it's, uh, you know, the hobbyist with, you know, a bunch of different cars and wants a flat roof or something, then you'd say no.
Yes.
And there's a, there's a procedure in place to appeal the staff's decision?
There's a, if the zoning ultimately, and just the way there are, zoning ordinance is structured, there's a zoning administrator position. And a decision made by the zoning administrator can be appealed to the planning and zoning commission.
Okay.
So basically, that would be a determination, that we determined it doesn't meet this, the standard in the, in the code. The person would say, no, I am gonna appeal that decision, and it would come before you for your review.
Need any more discussion on this one?
Okay. We have already discussed this one. This was one of the remaining items on driveway widths. So this called out specifically a detached garage located in the side yard, so probably a front-loaded side garage. And we have the additional width of the garage, so I'll go over what we currently require and then what the code is proposing. So if you have a detached garage in the rear yard, you can see here that your approaching driveway should be ten feet wide at the max. And then within thirty feet of the garage, it can start to widen to be as wide as the garage walls. Um, it can be as wide as garage walls for twenty feet in front of the garage. So with the assumption that a detached garage in a side yard would be a little bit closer to the road, there was the desire to limit that width to fifteen feet. And that within, I believe it's twenty-five feet of the garage doors, that it would narrow back down to a ten-foot driveway width. So on the other diagram, this distance was twenty feet, and the overall widening was thirty feet. In this case, this would actually be, I think, twenty-five feet. And.
In the, in the first instance, I think you mentioned thirty feet, within thirty feet of the garage doors.
Yes.
As the taper back. Is that, am I missing it? Is that in, written down in the ordinance?
It's in the ordinance, but it's just not shown in the diagram. But basically, within thirty feet of the doors, you have to be backed down to ten feet in width.
Okay, as long as it says that.
It does, yeah.
All right, then, fine.
Yeah. And there was a section of that that I wanted to, let's see. So this is the existing language in the code within the quote marks. The underlined portion would be added to the code, and the crossed out portion would be stricken from the code. And that, that was the proposed change. Aside from the requirement for driveways for side garages, there was, they would strike from the code that if a garage contains an entry door or extended wall alongside the garage doors, the owner may extend the width of the apron to cover that extended part of the garage footprint, but must taper back as required, but that would be struck from this section. Looking at the number of site plans that I have, I would recommend not removing that from the code because it would create a high number of non-conformities.
I would agree with that.
What instance would it be that if you have a driveway approaching the garage, is permitted to widen to the width of the garage from the exterior face of the exterior wall to the other exterior wall? In what instance would you then have another door that's to the side of that?
Sure, so you've got your vehicle doors, and then you've got a man door next to it?
Yeah.
Because you've got an extra wide garage.
But that's still the garage, the exterior face of the garage, is it not?
I think the.
Because it doesn't say garage door.
The other case is if you had a person door on the side of the garage. So sometimes folks have a, a separation. And I think the idea was basically, the way that the code is written, it would basically go, the width of the driveway was limited to the exterior walls, basically where the doors are. If that makes any sense?
Right.
The garage, the, the width of the garage.
But that's not how this reads, in fact, right? It says just the whole, it's, and it's the way your visual is, it's the whole width of the garage. It's what's shown in your visual.
Not just the doors.
It's not just the garage doors, which I kind of, I kind of like it just being the garage doors. But it doesn't sound like that's what our current ordinance says, actually.
I think the clarification was to make sure that if you had a little side door here, and you had someone walk along the side to go in, that was the, this allowance to have this extra width to allow that entry was what that was trying to allow in the code.
I would prefer something that just says you can have access sidewalk, not, like I wouldn't want the whole driveway to be widened for that little access point. Just have a little sidewalk that comes, you know, right angle, right angle to get into that.
Sure.
Myself, that's rather than, you know, twenty-five feet of extra.
And that's how we've interpreted it, that they have to have some sort of pedestrian access if you're, you know, parked here and going into the garage this way through, instead of opening the main door to walk through the garage?
Well, you say here, staff recommends not deleting the sentence that allows the width of the apron to extend to allow access to a front side or entry door. It's not just saying to provide sidewalk access, saying the whole width of the apron could be wider to allow for that access.
So we can, effectively, what we'd like to do is maintain the allowance to approve that in our code and not consider that non-conforming. If that needs to be reworded to specify that, then we, I would support rewarding it instead of striking it.
Okay. Yeah, I think we're, we agree that we'd want to have the access for the, for the door, but maybe just look at, to make sure that that's not going twenty feet past the garage.
It does say, but must taper back as required. So I, I think the intention of that sentence, and perhaps it could be better worded, but the intention is, is that just in front of the garage, wide enough so that somebody can go around the corner and go in the door, is acceptable.
But not be subject to the tapering that's applying to the entire driveway. That's how I wanted to interpret it, but I don't know if that's how it is interpreted. Or if that's how, someone could argue that that's too restrictive of an interpretation.
I think we just need to look at it to make clear what the intent is there.
We could also accompany, I think it would be really helpful to have a more detailed diagram.
Yes.
Is there a desire to have the more restrictive driveway approach for detached garages in the side yard to reduce that width of the, of the driveway?
Can you, I didn't understand your question. Can you repeat?
Would you like to put this language that was proposed in 2018 into the code? So that this, this diagram would be applicable?
Yes, I would. It's that one.
This diagram?
So this is where I, you know, keep getting confused on all of our definitions here. So this is the side yard, just meaning next to, adjacent to the house, not in the side yard technically, but in the rear of the property.
Yes, to the side of the house.
To the side of the, got it.
So, so a garage located in the side yard would be a garage that is within the depth of the main house? And not beyond that house?
Based on what we discussed earlier, I think our, if, without adding measurements to this drawing, our interpretation and what the direction that you provided would be, starting at this front foundation, this measurement right here would be forty feet.
Okay.
Because we said, you know, if it's, can be in the side if it's at least forty feet back.
So then this diagram, the house is not in the side yard, because it's beyond the four feet, forty feet?
Uh, the garage in this, in this case would be, the house would be deeper than forty feet. So if you had a house that was in my, let's see, forty, eighty, let's say this one hundred and twenty foot long house. If you, if you wanted to put a garage here, you'd have to go back from, starting at the front foundation of the house, forty feet. And then it could be in this, to the side of the house, side yard area.
Okay.
It couldn't be any closer to the front foundation of the house than forty feet. It'd have to be at least forty feet back. So we would, i- if we're defining this, now currently, let's say you built this garage today. Currently, what you'd be required to do, or what you'd be allowed to do, is have this extension for where you'd park in front of the garage. This would extend out twenty feet. What the, what the 2018 amendments were recommending is that that be reduced to fifteen feet. So that would shorten up that area to fifteen feet, with the idea being reducing the amount of hardscape that's, you're seeing from the road, because this is a little bit closer to the road than this driveway. So if we're assuming that that forty foot is the marker between kind of more visually public area and visually private area, then this hardscape would be visually in that public area.
I really don't feel strongly about this one. I'm okay with it, though.
Is it challenging to park in such a setup?
That's really the minimum that you could have to functionally be able to park a vehicle. And that's not, not every vehicle is going to fit in fifteen feet. Most will, but.
I mean, it's two, right? Like if there's already one car in the garage.
If you've got one or two cars in the garage and one or two cars in the driveway. If this measurement is fifteen feet, that's exactly correct. If you've got an extra long truck or van, full-size van, the end of that might extend past that area. Now, if you had just exceptionally large vehicles, that might cause a problem for you in terms of, and people might start trying to drive on that area. That would be the consequence of not allowing the extra, the twenty feet, and then the tapering.
But I, I would just say I don't have a problem with it, because if you look at how people actually do it, if they have that many vehicles, they end up pulling out, parking on the street during the day, you know, you just work with that.
Where they park in the.
Don't need a landing pad. So I, I think that's adequate space.
Okay.
For my, for my taste.
You have other thoughts on this one?
I think I need to drive around town a little bit.
I don't think that happens very often, that you have a, a garage, like detached, adjacent to, you know.
There aren't very many that I've seen, but now I'll, now that I'm on.
Isn't it even disfavored in the ordinance? You can only do it if you can't put it in the rear of the house, at least now.
There's, um, a section, let's see. Go back to our accessory.
There's one thing you have to do, a very wide lot, and most people don't have lots that are that wide, to be like the R1A maybe.
So the code currently says that accessory buildings are only permitted behind the principal building on a property, except that for a corner, maybe located on the side of the principal building, if it's not close to the street, then the principal building. Behind the principal building on a property. Do we want to allow? Because I've seen, I'm, I'm sure I've seen some garages that do not conform to the standard. I don't, I can't tell you the number. Is this something that we want to, in our example that we're looking at of having a side garage? If they demolished their garage and came back in for a building permit for a new garage, is this something that we'd want to allow, given the measurements that we discussed earlier? Or would that be something that we'd wanna require them to get a variation for?
To do what? I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, I apologize. Um, I've seen, I, in town, there are some garages that look like this, where the, the accessory building is not behind the principal building. If they just demolish their garage, they would be required to try to put it behind the principal building, unless they were on a corner lot. So if we change that section of the code that says accessory buildings have to be located behind the principal building on a property, which is currently in the code, given the dimensions that we're proposing here, are we certain that we wanna make that change, given that it's not currently allowed in the code? So let me go back.
Do we want to continue to require that accessory structures be behind the building? Is that what?
That is what I'm asking.
Okay.
Sorry. Sorry, I'm not being clear.
So it adjusts a different provision of the ordinance, of the code right now?
It's a different section.
Yeah, so think about whether we wanna discuss that.
Yeah.
But I mean, presumably, in, in many cases, I think the accessory structure was placed to the side of the building because the building itself might be too long for an accessory structure to be placed behind it. So, I mean, so I'm kind of reluctant to make someone, if, if, and I don't know if that's the case, but if, if that is one of the reasons for scenarios like this, I'm kind of reluctant to make people jump through like more hoops to do something that is really, we're, we're gonna let them do, because there simply isn't room. You know, in, in this scenario, to put a, you know, you have a longer driveway, turning around, going to the back of the house. You know, this seems eminently sensible the way this one is structured, so, I mean.
Because going back to pervious, semi-pervious, we, it will require more pavement. Right? If you're moving people.
That's true. That's a good point. Yeah.
Excellent point.
And maybe we don't wanna do that.
Yeah.
But right now, we don't allow this.
That's correct, unless you're on a corner lot.
I don't wanna change that.
I would be curious. I was just saying, would it be possible to see some examples of this, of where this exists currently? Because I, I really can't think of anything offhand.
Let me bring in photos of different types of garages. It could be that, in my mind, I remember seeing these, and it could be that my memory is, is faulty, and that these don't exist. I feel like they are, but let me bring some in. We did have, let's see. Just trying to think of if I've had any practical examples. I'll, I'll, I'll see what I can find on the field and bring things in. We can address that later time. The last item that we had was bonus density, or bonus building coverage. So as a reminder, we have building coverage requirements for all of our zoning districts, which are thirty percent across the board. And building coverage doesn't mean total square footage, it just means the, literally, the portion of the building that covers the ground. So for each of our five residential zoning districts, the coverage is thirty percent. And I included some numbers here just to compare based on what would result if the building coverage bonus was enacted. So the idea was that the area of the new garage should be excluded from the building coverage calculation in the following situations. So for new single-family dwelling units, detached garages in the rear yard or rear-loaded attached garages would be excluded from building coverage calculations. A couple of things to keep in mind. An accessory building can be, or the total size of accessory buildings can be no more than eight hundred square feet. You would also need to meet impervious surface coverage requirements on the lot. You would also need to meet impervious surface coverage requirements on the lot. So most people don't want to build a garage that large. Most of the new garages we're seeing are five hundred square feet or less. But that would basically increase the building coverage on a property by four to five hundred square feet typically. The second is construction where an existing family unit is being remodeled and the detached garage in the rear yard or rear-loaded garage is constructed in lieu of a previously existing attached front-loaded garage. I'm not aware of any cases where that's happened, but that would be another option that was listed in the 2018 optional amendments. And then if you didn't have a garage before, so a detached garage in the rear yard or rear-loaded attached garage is added where there wasn't one before, and that bonus should be a maximum of four hundred square feet. And that's the only garage on the property. So this was discussed in February and the thought was we need to give this some additional consideration. And we have, just to provide some numbers again, R1AA is our largest zoning district for residential zoning. The minimum lot size is ten thousand five hundred, going down as we progress. R2, R3, or R4 are some of our smaller lots, five thousand square feet is the minimum. And you can see the building coverage sizes. And then just as a thought, how much four hundred percent is as part of that building coverage? But I think it would actually be more beneficial to take a look at these examples. We have, this is, again, the R1AA district, this is our largest zoning district. And the house, the structure, the footprint of the house outlined in black here and the garage outlined in gray represent the maximum building coverage allowed under the code. And the property also has the maximum impervious surface allowed for the zoning district. So if an additional four hundred square feet of bonus coverage were allowed, let's say they wanted to, and I just added it to the back of the house for, for ease of visual representation, that's what the appearance would be as opposed to not allowing that bonus. That's three point five percent of the lot area or eleven point five percent increase And then moving down to R1A, which is our most numerous zoning district, we've got most properties are in this district. And again, the same principle here is a conforming site and then the addition in orange of four hundred square feet. And that is...
In, in these examples, you're showing us the, they already have maximum impervious coverage. So the bonus, the way you showed here, is actually also a bonus of the total impervious coverage.
Yes. So that would be a consideration. And I would, without going into, and I can, if you'd like, more design efforts to try to figure out if, how to maximize or what a reasonable application of this would be to add four hundred square feet of building coverage and still meet the impervious surface coverage. I can take a look at that. This, this looks like a very standard layout to me. So if, I would recommend pairing the increase in the building coverage with an increase in impervious surface coverage to match the size.
What do you mean, to match?
To match the size of whatever bonus. So for example, instead of just saying you can have an additional four hundred square feet of building coverage, I would say four hundred square feet of building coverage and impervious surface coverage.
And why would you recommend that?
Because this is a, what I would, this is a typical lot for the R1A district. If you wanted to allow them bonus building coverage, they really couldn't necessarily take advantage of that because a lot of those garages are in the back and to get there, you'd have to put in a driveway to reach the back.
So because of the narrowness of the lot?
Exactly. It takes, it becomes difficult to take advantage of the bonus if you don't pair it with the impervious surface coverage bonus.
But that, that rationale changes if you have the smaller lots, not the R1AA, but like the R3 or the R4.
Sure.
So that's part of the difficulty I has when looking at your table, which is very useful. And I was thinking, well, if it doesn't increase the impervious surface percentage, I'm fine with it. But if it also increases for like an R2 or an R3 where they can only have fifteen hundred squ, well, they can have thirty-two hundred and fifty square feet of impervious surface coverage on a five thousand square foot lot. If then you add another four hundred square feet, you're talking about like almost eighty percent of the lot can be covered. And that seems, like that can cause a lot of problems, not just with neighbors, but also with what we were talking about before, impervious surface drainage, all those things, stormwater runoff, so.
Who's the rationale for doing this? Is anyone?
It was to encourage rear detached garages. So instead of having a teardown and having a front-loaded garage, the idea was, will you, if we increase the size of building coverage that you're allowed on the property, if you put a rear-loaded garage, a rear garage?
Okay.
So we'll take a look at one of the smaller lots. So this is in the R2, R2, R3, R4 all have the same minimums. So they're generally applicable. This is the impact, again, so again, I'd use a round number because one of the recommendations is four hundred square feet, just so we could have a starting point of what to look at. This would be a twenty-seven percent increase in building coverage. These seem like the lots, perhaps R1A as well. R1AA seems less likely to be, need to have a front-loaded garage if, if redeveloped. But it seems to me the smaller lots, the fifty-foot wide, small lots in R2, R3, or R4, if they were torn down, it seems, if I were rebuilding it, I would be very tempted to put a front-loaded garage in and, because this, you know, cuts into the backyard.
Your backyard, yeah.
Yeah.
Sure.
I feel like this might be a topic we need to sit with a bit more. I don't, I feel like in general, we're not really comfortable moving ahead with this.
So what I can do, if we have, if you have, you're giving general feedback on what you do or don't like, or questions that you have, what I can do is provide additional renderings. If you say, for example, this property, this looks like too much coverage, or the idea of using, of having an increase of some amount of building coverage for an R2, R3, or R4 property, but no increase in impervious surface coverage, can that be done? And what would it look like if it is? I can come back with that.
Yeah, I'd say for me, the, the notion of automatically increasing the impervious surface coverage is where I've got the most hesitation.
Yeah.
You know, I understand why it's practical in some circumstances, but I think I'd want to see a little more information on that.
One of the things I can do is take a look at theoretically, if this was redesigned, we had taken a look at, for the impervious surface standards, if someone replaced the driveway and the front walk, the hardscape with a semi-pervious surface, what kind of numbers would that be? You know, we can calculate that into our calculations. May not be likely or financially feasible, but...
Because what you're doing is, this may be an oversimplification, but you're trying to incentivize people, say you can build a bigger house.
Yes.
Because you're giving them extra square footage, but you got to put your garage in the back.
And I added it now, you can, if you are looking at what was proposed back in 2018, what they're saying is that, yeah, effectively a bigger house. So the new garage should be excluded from the building coverage in these areas. So basically, if we're saying that this, this, I'm trying to remember how big this garage, it's maybe four hundred and fifty square feet, let's say it's four hundred square feet. If this is excluded, then that effectively can be added to the house.
I see.
If that makes any sense, so.
And the other thing it could have an impact on, especially for fifty-foot wide lots, is it could make the front of the house not only not have a front-loaded garage, which changes the whole facade, but it could also narrow it a bit because instead of building with five-foot setbacks, you, you have to, you have a ten-foot wide garage and then you're going to have some amount of a setback on the other side, would still be a five-foot setback. So you're having a thirty-five-foot wide house instead of a forty-foot wide house. You're having a narrower house.
Mm-hmm.
That's, that is, that, so...
That's correct.
You are reducing the curb impact of the house, but you could be causing then problems in the back for everyone.
Yeah, it's, that's kind of the give and take that you have there because...
And would it be right to change the percentage for the smaller lots, somehow link it to the size of a lot or something while still providing a bonus? Because you're just dealing with less land, so you can't have...
It doesn't have to be the full, I mean, in this case, we're saying the garage does not count toward, it doesn't need to be the full area of the garage. You know what I mean? You could just give a percentage bonus instead of...
Sure. It could be, it could be a set bonus and it could be smaller than four hundred square feet. I use four hundred square feet as, based on their recommendation.
Right, based on using, including the garage or excluding the garage.
And just as context, and we don't know, obviously, what the future holds, again, we don't have, if we had enacted these standards back in 2018 as proposed, we wouldn't have even had many properties to apply them to, would have been able to take up the opportunity to do it because not many properties are doing these kinds of developments. We don't have a lot of properties that are new, completely new, single-family homes, detached dwelling units. Or I, I can't think of an instance where we've had someone remove a front-loaded garage and turn it into a rear lo, a rear garage. There may be an instance where someone didn't have a garage and they've added one, but the, the numbers are in the single digits.
So everything has been rehabs? I mean, for the most part?
Lots of rehabs.
A lot of rehab.
Some additions.
Yeah.
Is there any more direction you need from us on this item?
I don't think so. I, what I'll do is try to provide, as we discussed, I'll provide, I think, the entire section of the ordinance so you can see everything in context with the direction that you provided. I'll provide additional examples of a bonus density, if that's desirable. So for example, like we did for the impervious surface coverage, here's what a percent or a certain step would be in the different zoning districts, so we can kind of look and see what makes sense. And then does the impervious surface coverage still, is it still met? And then I'll also just provide some photos of, for our definitions of different garages around town, so we can all agree on definitions and have the diagrams included in the amendments.
Thanks, it would be very helpful.
Yes.
Thank you.
And if that's the case, what I'd like to do is bring that, those draft materials back to you back in January and then have, re-review and then move forward with a public hearing, maybe in February.
All right. In that case, we can move on. Now that we have no old business, is there any information?
Just that our next meeting will be Thursday, January twenty-second.
All right. In that case, can I have a motion to adjourn?
Still moved.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned, see you.